Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media's Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks to the team at East Hampton Media as always for the great job that they do. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. This meeting is now being called to order. Barbara, could we have the roll call?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Yeah.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zerrit.
Present.
I will now ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have no minutes to approve, so we will go right into public speak. For those who are attending the meeting, to speak on any topic other than what is in our public hearing tonight, please remember that this is your turn to speak and the council will be listening, but we will not be responding to your comments in any way. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city council. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting the Participants option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand at the bottom of the Participants window. If you're dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. You may also mute and unmute your line by pressing star six. For everyone, please remain on mute until called. Before commenting, state your name and your street or the town you live in if it is not East Hampton. If you find that your internet connection is slow, remove the video portion. You will have three minutes to make your comment. If time runs out, I will let you finish the sentence that you were speaking, but then we'll have to move on. Tonight, we do have a public hearing at 6:15, so public speak will be paused at 6:15 until the completion of that hearing. Once the public hearing has completed, we will resume public speak. If you're here to speak in support of one of the city council nominees, we will be having public speak specifically for that next Wednesday during the special meeting when the city council at large will be elected. That doesn't mean you can't speak to it tonight. I'm just saying that we will have a specific public speak for that purpose next Wednesday. So is there anyone who would now like to say anything during public speak? Please go ahead and raise your hand or jump up and down. Not a person. I don't see anybody, Dan. How about you? You're on mute, Dan. I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone, and there's no one in raised hand, so we can move on.
So we can, we have a few minutes, so we'll move into communication from elected officials, boards, and committees. Is there anyone of the city council who has any announcements or would like to make any comments at this time? Please go ahead and raise your hand. Counselor Peak.
Hi, I just recently got off the phone with a constituent, a person by the name of Leo Reel, who had sent an email to the mayor and to myself, which I forwarded on to the rest of you at his request. Since I forwarded it to all of you, I won't read it verbatim, but he had just expressed some general concern about masks and mask wearing in the, in the zone where folks are supposed to be wearing a mask and was asking whether there's anything that the city could do in addition to what they're currently doing to enforce that stuff. I offered to make that statement on his behalf because he was having some technical issues. So I just wanted to just state that that was, that was a constituent concern I heard today.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Peak. Anyone else? Counselor Zerrit.
Thank you, President Coniff. I did just see that email as well. As someone who's been accused of policing the pandemic and who's participated in some degree in, at least, speaking to the, our health department a lot and contributing some ideas to our COVID policies and who's involved in, in healthcare, I can only reinforce the, the email and the concerns of our, that resident and our other residents. We have a mask policy in place. I don't necessarily think people should be, be, being fine, but we can potentially look at ways as a city to gently, continue to gently remind people about our policies for sure. There was an event on Saturday, a political gathering where the majority of people weren't wearing masks, and I did call into dispatch to report it. And I now am in the midst of an email thread, which I'm happy to share of any of you, just regarding clarification about such events and how our mask policy and any potentially superseding mask policies apply. But I do think we need to continue to take this seriously. So also, today is, sorry, just looking for my notes. Today is also International Pronouns Day. It's a day to get more familiar with the diversity of pronouns among our friends, colleagues, and neighbors. You can go onto pronounsday.org to learn more. As they say on their site, International Pronouns Day seeks to make respecting, sharing, and educating about personal pronouns commonplace. I use he/him. Also, National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, this Saturday, 10/24. There is a list of municipalities, Northwestern District Attorney, on that page, on David Sullivan's page. In our city, prescriptions can be brought to a drop box at the police station at 32 Payson. And also, with the election coming up, make sure you vote. It's the only real way to make sure that you're, you can absolutely participate in the democratic process. This is a very strange time in our nation. I don't think, certainly in my life and talking to people in other generations before me, I've ever seen our country so divided. And so I pray for a time where we can find ways to come together and hate less and love more. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kozinski.
Just following up on Counselor Zerrit's comments, mask wearing, I cannot endorse it more. I believe that is something that if we had started with, we would have been far better if we had all been given that guidance in a consistent manner. I will speak strongly to that. With regard to the election, absolutely, get out there and vote. And I would like to take this opportunity to remind those in precincts 1, 2, and 5. If you haven't heard already, the voting has moved from Whitebrook to the high school. The voting will not be at Whitebrook, it will be at the high school. So please take note.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I just want to make a quick comment. Last Thursday, I had the great privilege of spending the day with the East Hampton Fire Department doing ride-alongs. And I want to thank Chief Norris, Captain Tom Rice, Captain Dan Constantine, who provides the fire safety and prevention inspections and education, firefighters Matt Sandler, Rich Blomstrom, Matt Anis, and Jason Dunham, as well as Administrative Assistant Brenda Ruthier for being so welcoming to me. Special shout out to Captain Sandy Kraus, who is on the team from the Western Mass Regional Technical Rescue Team, who were doing exercises while I was there. If you're not familiar with the Western Mass Regional Technical Rescue Team, please go to their Facebook page, you can also go to wmtrt.org. Captain Kraus represents the East Hampton Fire Department on a team made up of over 70 career volunteer and call firefighters from the region. They respond to high-angle rescues, I don't know what that means, low-angle rescues, still don't know what that means, confined space rescue, trench rescue, and tower rescue. If you remember from May, we had a paraglider stuck in a tree. The people who rescued that individual were from the Western Mass Regional Technical Rescue Team. So they do those kind of weird, very difficult kind of rescues, and they were amazing to watch the work that they were doing. They held an exercise over in the DPW place, and it was amazing. So I thoroughly enjoyed the day, and I thank all of them for their hospitality, for fixing breakfast, and for just making me feel so welcome. I appreciate it, so thank you. Anyone else have any comments? We're a little bit early. I don't want to do the nomination process yet. I'm going to wait until after public speak because it would probably take longer than five minutes. Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. Two things. First, correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, but the last day to register to vote is this Saturday? Is that correct, Barbara?
It is, it is correct, yes. We'll be open from 2:00 to 4:00 and 6:00 to 8:00 during early voting. So anybody can come by.
Haven't registered to vote, this is a pretty important election, please do so. Secondly, I'd like to speak to the candidates.
You're muted, Dan.
Yeah. We have, I want to thank all the people, I see some of them are here at our meeting, who have decided to try to enter into public service. Some of you have already run for office before, and I thank you for doing so. It's, it's a commitment, and I'm sure you're all aware of that. And I want to take a moment to remind you of that commitment because the reason we have this opening is because Counselor Lynch found that he couldn't give it 100% because he had a new job and family commitments, which have to come first. City council is not a vocation. Your family, your, your job commitments, they have to be first. And we also had another candidate who could have stepped in, but Laura Douglas couldn't do it because she's committed on the front lines of COVID as a nurse. And she knows, we know that that kind of commitment is a priority. So I thank you for doing this, and we all need to work as city councilors, we all do the homework, we go to the meetings, and it isn't easy, but I think you all recognize that, and we thank you for, I just want to thank you for stepping up. That's all, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Counselor Kozinski.
I'd like to echo those comments and thank everyone who's put forth their interest. It is a very time-consuming process. Last meeting, I think the, there were 104 pages in the agenda and notes to the meeting, so there were 104 pages. This time, we only have a light agenda and, and notes. I think it's only in the pages numbers around 74. So there's a bit of reading to do on a regular, on a regular basis. But that's how we are able to get things done, and it is a commitment. I wanted to say two other things. One is, I had a very dear loss in my family. My, lost my aunt, who raised me with my mom today. And this is the kind of commitment I think we have to do for council. I'm here. She lived a long and happy life. So I'm very saddened and I'm very sorry to, if I bring some of that emotion to the meeting. It wasn't my intent. My intent is, I would love to be doing something else tonight, not here sharing my emotions. So I apologize for that if any of it manages to leak through. I also had, my phone had an accident, so the cell phone is out. I want to give you my, my other number in case anyone does want to reach me. That is a landline, it is not a cell phone. You can also reach me through the city email, but the 575-6009 will not work, so I apologize to any councilors who may have attempted to reach me today.
Thank you, JP. I'm sorry to hear about your loss. Our sympathies are with you, and I truly understand, and thank you for being here tonight. I know it's difficult. Anything else that's about, we have about one minute, if anyone would like to have any other comments? Okay, why don't we go ahead and open the public meeting? Could I have a motion?
I'm moved to open the public meetings.
Second.
Motion is second to open the public hearing. Any comments? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist. Dan.
Dan.
You're muted.
Just put it, there you go.
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
And Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one, we will start with Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we have the fuel storage license application. Basically, is, is a license just to change the tank that they have in 35 and 40 O'Neill Street. Is already at 10,000 gallons of diesel on the ground of that property. That tank, I'm pretty sure is since 1986. The committee voted in favor of the new license, 320, we voted in favor of it. The Conservation Commission is okay with this amended license. That's the word that I was looking for, is an amended license for this new tank. They're going to install two water coolers for the safety in case if, they have any fire. Every year, they have to review the license. They do a really good job of, I mean, the fire department do a really good job evaluating this project in, in O'Neill Street. Then Captain Dan Constantine from the fire department was working really hard with the consultants in Jody Emmettin for this. That's what I have. They're going to install, I have it here. So they're going to install one propane tank home station, one diesel tank, triple propane storage tank, one methanol tank, five 1,000 domestic tanks, five, six, 500 domestic tanks, 14, 120 domestic tanks, and 13, 25 domestic tanks. We have Captain Dan Constantine with us here in case any of the other consultants have any question about this, this license. But that's what I have. We're going to hear your pick.
Does anyone from the council have any questions? Counselor Rist.
Yeah, for Dan Constantine, I know that you've all approved this, and I just want you to have an opportunity to let the city know that the fire department feels this is safe because these are large propane tanks. And I just thought maybe you could let everybody know out there that the fire department has examined this entire, entire fuel storage, and you feel comfortable with it. So I'd like to give you that opportunity.
Sure, Counselor Rist, thank you. I, along with, I've been working with, with Jody Emmettin. She's the consultant for the owner of the property. And she's specifically, her expertise is in, is in the propane industry. And I've been working with her. They did a comprehensive fire safety plan, and I reviewed that. And it's, it's done very well. We're very satisfied with that. I've gone over, talked about it with the chief, and we're both very comfortable with that. We did go a little above and beyond the plan and requirements as the AHJ. There's going to be three, 30,000 gallon tanks, and we opted, we're requiring to have a pre-piped two water monitors.
Dan, you may want to turn off your video, you're freezing. If you want to just turn off your camera, maybe it'd be easier.
Dan, do you know, we've lost you, Dan.
Okay, I don't know if there's anyone, Jody, I don't know.
Yes, Madam President, Jody's here, maybe she can add something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jody. Let me unmute you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
We're, Dan.
I guess my internet went out for a minute. I don't know. I've got four college students here doing classes, so it's kind of.
Dan, why don't you take your camera off? It'll make the bandwidth less crazy.
Okay.
Make it easier.
All right, no, that's great. So, so anyway, so we did require the pre-piped turret guns. There's going to be two, each 500 gallons per minute that are going to be preset there. And this is the worst-case scenario. It's be pre-piped to the street, we can hook right into it, the street, and feed it from the street and cool the tanks down and stuff. But again, there are several safety measures in place per the state code and the National NFPA's 58th consensus code that a lot of things have to happen to get to that. So we're very confident that, moving forward, that this is the safe, safest it absolutely can be. And it's actually in a, to be honest with you, it's in, it's in a really good spot in town. If I had to pick anywhere in that industrial area, it's a really good, good spot to have this. So, thank you. Jody, were you going to say something?
I was just going to finish about the monitors and also explain that along with local oversight, we also have a very lengthy state procedure to put in place and to be inspected by the state. Massachusetts is one of the toughest states that I work in as far as oversight for these type of facilities. And I'm available for any questions that the board might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Zerrit.
Thank you, President Coniff. This might be more for Chairperson Gomez. I know early on in this discussion, and thank you for, you know, taking this process through a very thoughtful and thorough discussion, especially when you're talking about flammable materials. There were some concerns from some neighbors, and I hadn't really heard much about it recently. So do you feel like their concerns were addressed at the committee level?
Thank you, Counselor Zerrit. Yes, definitely. The neighbors was part of the, the meeting. We, we pushed this a little bit just to give it a break for the neighbors to be part of it. They participated at least in two meetings with, with a few questions. Most of them was for safety issues. And having the Captain Dan from the fire department answering all the questions that they have, I think we, we cover most of their concerns from the neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay. Any else, anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public have any comments about this particular item? Go ahead and raise your hand, either virtually or non-virtually. Okay, I don't see any. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you. I will make a motion to amend, amend an existing fuel storage license at 35 and 40 O'Neill Street. East Hampton to allow for a total of 101,005 gallons of propane and 110 gallons of methanol.
Second.
Motion is second to approve an amended license for propane and methanol. Any further discussion?
Salem Von.
Yep, turn on. Yep, I'm here. Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi. Motion passes 8 to 0. The next item on the public hearing is the FY 2021 budget revision request. Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two budget revisions before us, which changes the bottom line of the budget to $47,287,465.13. The first is a cultural recreation change because of the library's lack of funding to meet certification. And I'm going to explain this, but I'd like to invite Jen Galan, our treasurer, to step in and correct me after I'm done. This is necessary due to the lack of information on, on the numbers needed for minimal requirements for certification of the library prior to when the budget was set. To cover it, we might have been able to use the Williston donation, which in the past was non-designated but went to the library. It was not part of the budget process because it always came in late. And if it was available this year, we could have covered this deficit. However, Williston has decided to, and I'm not positive on this, donated specifically this time to public safety and, and education and training. If I'm wrong about the specifics on that donation, please, somebody correct me. The treasurer secured a $3,000 donation to cover this deficit from Westfield Bank because of her contacts there. And we certainly appreciate Westfield Bank. The $3,000 will bring us up to the certification level. So the revised full cultural recreation budget will be $563,320.14. So Jen, did I get that right? Please add anything. You're muted, Jen.
Yeah, I was telling my family to. No, you, you got that, you got that right. You know, the Williston donation was redirected this year. And the, in order for the library to get certification from the state, we have to come up with, and it's the average of the last three years that we've given times two and a half percent. And so when you do the calculation out, what was approved in the budget was $3,000 short of what they needed to be certified. So this is just us making up the difference.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on this? I don't, I don't see anybody. Peg, do you see anybody?
I do not, no.
Anything from the mayor or from the public?
No.
All right, I'm going to make a motion for this particular one. I'm going to just read the budget revision. For cultural, I move that the city council vote to raise appropriate the sum of $563,320.14 under the various departments listed under Section 6 Cultural Recreation, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report unless amended be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the Mayor and Finance Committee. The library donation account will be added $3,000.
Second.
Motion and a second to revise the Section 6 Cultural Recreation to reflect a donation of $3,000 for the library. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Salem?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The second revision is in debt and interest, and this is really good news. Our financial team in recalculating our bonding, and Val will step in on this. The high school bonds, for instance, were recalculated, and we are saving $114,471.53 this year and this, this fiscal year for '21. But I believe at the finance meeting, it was Jen or Val indicated that it would be a savings of over a million dollars in the life of the bond. This is a direct reduction in property taxes because of the debt exclusion override. And I invite Val to come and answer any of your questions or to speak more to this, but I'm very appreciative of the finance team for constantly trying to find ways of saving money on all of these bonds and loans. Val, do you have anything to add?
Not really. It reduced the amount that we can raise by the amount that the debt was lowered. So now we have to lower the debt budget to balance it out. That's basically it.
But it is a good thing.
Oh, yes, it's a very good thing.
I don't know if any counselors have any questions?
Do any members of the public have any questions? Quiet group tonight. Okay, Counselor Rist?
Okay, section seven debt and interest. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,751,099.47 for the various departments listed under section seven debt and interest. And that's the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report unless amended be considered specific appropriations. Was the following amounts to be transferred or raised as recommended by the mayor and the finance committee. Water and sewer enterprise, 505,126.72. Debt exclusion taxation to be reduced by the high school bond premium, 3,103,310. Debt exclusion taxation to be reduced by the new K-8 school bond premium, 2,984.11. Tax rate stabilization, 100,000. The change is a reduced change of 114,471.15 due to bond refinancing.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the revision to the debt and interest section seven of the budget. Any further conversation? Counselor Kozinski?
I just wanted to say how fortunate and privileged we are to be able to be in a position of passing this motion tonight. We are, it's just unbelievable that we are able to do this for the community. Thank you so much for, to everyone who was involved.
Madam President, I just like to add, the reason we're able to do this is the city is financially stable in its stabilization accounts especially. And bond rating companies see this and they reduce their interest on the bonds. This has saved us millions of dollars in that major high, the new pre-K to eight school bond, high school bond, over the life of these bonds. It's a lot of money that's saving the taxpayers because we have a very financially stable city. And I appreciate the mayor and the finance team for keeping it that way.
Agreed. Okay, we have a motion is second on the table. Barbara? JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby? Salem, did we lose you? All right. JP, Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Okay, I see Salem, but maybe he's frozen. So. Okay.
It passed seven to zero.
Seven to zero.
Madam President, I move that the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Any conversation? Barbara? Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. All right, so now we're going to move into the nomination process for the candidates to fill the vacancy of the city councillor at large. So first I want to say this is unprecedented in terms of us going through this process in this way. So bear with us as we work through it, but I think, I think it's, it's amazing that we have the people that we have that want to do this, as Counselor Rist said earlier. So the way we're going to do this, and I'm speaking to the counselors now, I'm going to ask for nominations from the floor. And if you could please raise your hand, I will recognize you. You make the motion. That motion needs to be seconded before that candidate will be eligible to be elected. During this meeting, we are only going to take the nomination. So once we have no further nominations, we're going to move on with our meeting. And next week, we're going to schedule, and I will schedule, and by virtue of saying it right now, I am scheduling, a special city council meeting on October 28th to run the election for the, to fill the vacancy. So all of the, the electing process will happen next week. This is only the nomination to get the field of candidates that we will be voting on next week. So at this time, we will, any questions before we start? Let me, Counselor Rothschild?
Can we give a little introduction to our nomination, or do you just want us to nominate?
Um, you can. I, I would prefer that you keep it fairly short because we're going to do all of that next week. And, but you certainly can give an introductory, you know, why. I, that's totally fine. So at this time, I will ask for nominations to fill the city councillor at large vacancy. Counselor Rothschild?
I'd like to nominate Erica Flood to serve on the East Hampton City Council. She ran for precinct two seat last, last round.
I just need to know where I'm on the meeting.
Yeah, well, unmute him.
Okay, mute that guy. And she, she ran a great campaign. I met her during the campaign cycle. She came to one of my events and I enjoyed talking to her about issues in the city. She was not, she did not, I was supporting Omar Gomez in that run, but I was very impressed with her engagement and she's gotten a lot of support from other people in the city. I just would, just want to uplift the words I hear the most when describing her is like a strong work ethic, commitment to community and resilience. So I'm happy to put forth her, put forward her name.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion is second for Erica Flood. Any further nominations from the floor? Counselor Rist?
I nominate Jared Hinkle. He has run for office before. He has worked for this community, especially with our youth groups. He's a veteran, which I appreciate very much. His public service includes being a veteran and a winner of the Purple Heart. He's also chairman of our veterans board. So I feel he's adamantly qualified to be nominated. So I therefore move to nominate him.
Second.
Motion and a second to nominate Jared Hinkle to the city council. Any further nominations from the floor? Counselor Derby?
I would like to nominate Gwen Morrissey. Gwen is someone who has been active in East Hampton and politics and is a PhD and level-headed and really, you know, someone I think could be a real great asset to the city council. So I'd like to nominate Gwen Morrissey.
Second from Lindsay. Motion is second for Gwen Morrissey to be a candidate for city council. Any further nominations from the floor? Counselor Peak?
I would like to nominate Kay Collins. I think you all know Kay. She's worked very closely with the city council on a number of issues. But she's also somebody who's been involved in small business community, someone who has a lot of experience working with policy on a corporate level. And someone who I think has really strong patient skills and established relationship with many of the counselors. I think she'd be a great fit. So I would like to nominate Kay Collins.
Second.
Motion and a second to nominate Kay Collins to fill the vacancy on city council. Any further nominations from the floor? Counselor Kozinski?
I'd like to make a nomination of someone who has served in various capacities to the city and also has a very interesting background and experience, family background, family members that I think will help bring life experience to the council and also a great deal of commitment. He had ran for precinct two, a term back and had served in the interim on the Economic Development and Industrial Commission, the commission vice chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. He is the committee chair of the telecom advisory committee. He's served in municipal vulnerability and preparedness studies and has helped the city to get a recent $176,000 grant. In addition to others, he is the president of his local condominium association. Has an interesting business background and I think will bring a variety of different experiences to, to the city. I'd like to nominate Paul St. Pierre.
Motion and a second for Paul St. Pierre to fill the vacancy on the city council. Any further nominations from the floor? Seeing none?
Madam President, I move that all nominations be closed.
Second.
Motion second to close the nominations to fill vacancy on city council. Barbara? Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
And Tom Peak?
Hi.
Okay, nominations are closed. I just want to congratulate Erica Flood, Jared Hinkle, Gwen Morrissey, Kay Collins, and Paul St. Pierre. Thank you very much for stepping up to the plate and wanting to do this job. Next week, we will have the election in the special city council meeting on October 28th at six o'clock. We would request all of your presence at that meeting. We're going to allow a public speak, for the public to speak on your behalf. I'm, I'm going to be very clear to the public that we're not going to have a public speak where people speak against people. It's only public speak to speak for the people that they, they want to move forward. Each candidate will be given five minutes to talk to their qualifications and why they want to be on the city council. Each of the city counselors will ask, put up to one question, up to one question of each of the candidates. And I, I'm hoping that by all of us asking one question, that if you have a couple in your head, you will get them answered by some other way. At the conclusion of that process, the counselors will then vote via ranked choice voting. Right now, as we sit here today, there's a, we've been testing an online application that we plan to use. We may change our mind by the time we get there, but in any event, we are going to use ranked choice voting. We will ask each of the city counselors to rank their candidates, one through five. We will announce each city counselor's rankings publicly so that you will know how they have voted. And at the conclusion, we will announce the winner of a winner, the person who was elected as the city councillor at large. You will be sworn in on the start of the meeting on 11/4. Once you are sworn in, you will be available to vote and to participate in all committees, subcommittee, well, committees and the city council meeting. So that is the process. I will encourage any of the nominees, if you have any questions between now and next week, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or any of the other city counselors. And we would be happy to explain further what we're going to do. And as I mentioned earlier, it's the first time we're doing it. So we'll, we'll hopefully not make it too, too confusing as we go through this. But I'm looking forward to it. I thank you all for, for stepping up to the plate. We have, we can't go wrong, no matter what happens, actually. Counselor Rist?
I just wanted to say that I hope it's all right, but I love all of the candidates to provide a phone number we can call you on. Obviously, if you're going to be a city councillor, you become a public servant and the public may need to reach you. So if you can email us all the phone number you'd like us to call, if I have a question, I'd like to be able to call you on it. It'll make next week's meeting go faster. I don't know what questions I might have, but I'd like to be able to reach you. So if you could email us your phone numbers, that would be great.
That's a great idea. All right. Then I think we can move on, unless there's any comments from the council. Okay, we will move on to mayor communications. Mayor LaChapelle, are you still here?
There you are. I am. Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you for everyone who is running for city council. That is heartwarming. Especially in this political climate, but for East Hampton, I'm not surprised to have many people running and all with such great qualifications. So thank you very much. And I look forward to working with whoever obtains a seat going forward. Tonight, I, I have something very different for the council. And that's a transmittal that was in the packet. I'm going to briefly just go over, not the whole packet, but the process itself and how it is, it's different. It's a project that we all know very well and have watched kind of rise like a phoenix out of the ground, One Ferry Street. Um, and it's a transmittal for application for approval of a project under MGL 121A. And the shorthand there is that if, if the application is successful among city council and the mayor, then it becomes a 121A project and is allowed to negotiate different tax exemptions, betterments and special assessments. So this goes back to so long ago when we created the district improvement financing for the One Ferry Street, but also a large portion, portion of Route 10. It is a joint application review process. So what, what happens, just top line, is that the transmittal comes from my office as before you. The timeline for this is very strict for 121As. And the attached 6A agreement, which lays out the tax incentives that I've negotiated with the developer. The planning board has a process that they need to do within 45 days, and the city council has a process that they need to do in 90 days. At the end of the 45 days or sooner, that planning board takes the report and brings it over to city council. The 90 days that the city council have includes finance or whatever the, you know, whatever the council's preference is to review the financial, financial details. By 90 days, a report on this 121A application must be given to me, the mayor. What I am asking in this letter with all of this documentation is that the council accepts this and sets a joint public hearing for November 4th for the developer to do a full presentation of the project and the application wants to get it in front of the public, also the planning and city council. And then allow those two processes that I just described play out. So within the letter, we talk quickly about our proposed timeline, if it is amenable to council, which would be that joint initial public hearing. That will not be the last public hearing by any means on this, on November 4th. And then December 19th, the planning board has till get you, city council, a report on their site review and the, the elements that is under the planning board purview. And then the city council has until February 2nd, 2021 to get a final report to me. So all, there's, there's a whole bunch of other information here. I'm not going to go over, but we, we really did want to get it in front of the public and, and this body to, to be able to set this, this timeline, which is, is quite tight.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the edification of the council. Because of, you've probably seen in your packet the 50 or 70 pages that Planner Bag submitted to us, which is only a portion of the documentation. There is still documentation out on the city website that needs to be digested by all of us. So at this time, I would highly discourage us from asking the mayor any questions right now because none of us have read it to the degree that we need to. And all of those questions can be asked on November 4th during the public hearing. So I'm not going to really entertain any questions of the mayor. You can thank me later, mayor. Right now, but I think, except Barbara. Barbara, I will entertain a question from.
Okay, I just have a question of the process. I'm reading here, it says pursuant to the statute, a legal ad will be published at least 14 days prior to the hearing date?
It actually has already been published.
It has been?
Yep.
Jeff is taking care of that.
Okay, never mind. Because that's today. It has to be today.
It was last week sometime.
Okay.
If you don't.
Okay.
We submitted it Monday.
Okay, Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I just want to go over it a little bit. This is unusual in that we're setting a public hearing. But at that public hearing, it's for presentation. The council won't be voting on anything. And although there may be questions from that public hearing, it goes to finance and planning. And I encourage all of us, if we have major questions, to look it over and get to the finance, especially for the tax incentives and to planning, if you have major questions. I also want to remind Jeff that this is supposed to be, if I read it. I also want to remind Jeff that this is supposed to be, if I read it right, a joint public hearing with planning. And I believe it's required that planning board have a quorum at our meeting on November 4th. So I'm just putting that out there. I'm not sure if that's correct, but it says a joint public hearing. So that said, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the project under Mass General Law 121A entitled One Industrial Loss LLC on November 4th at 6:15.
Second.
Motion and a second to set a public hearing for MGL 121A on the industrial loss project. Any comments? Barbara.
Lindsay Rothschild.
I'm sorry, Counselor Kozinski.
I had a question about the process, just to be sure we touched all, dotted all our Is and crossed at our Ts. Because Barbara, if I may, I can do this after the motion, or I don't think it's necessary to the motion, but it is important as far as the process. In terms of the postings, it was said that Jeff took care of it. Generally, Barb takes care of all the postings. I think we're talking about the newspaper advertising with regard to Jeff. I had a question about notifying the public during the pandemic about all the issues. Do we have a process where we post outside the building still? Is the item posted on the website? And is there any other places that we post, given the current scenario?
Website, yes. Outside the building, Barbara shook her head no, but the website, maybe our Facebook page, I believe is correct on that. I'm sure Jeff has done as much as he can in the planning board level to get the information out, councillor. So that's the best I can do for you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Barb. Thank you. Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Public hearing is set for November 4th. Thank you, Mayor. Anything else, Mayor?
No, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. All right. Did I hear, I'm sorry. Counselors, Eric?
Can I ask a really quick question of the mayor?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, sure.
Mayor.
Before, Mayor. There you go.
Are there, are there any resources, or, and I can email you too, because obviously I don't want you to go HTTPS colon backslash on me in the meeting, but are there resources where one can gain more information about these types of, this proposal in front of us so I can, I can get a better understanding?
Yeah, within the, the application itself has the MGL sites. And if you also go to, and I just want to, the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is a state agency, runs through these programs, the 121A, the 6As, and, and overall tax incentive programs to rehabilitate, you know, deteriorating and basically mill sites. So the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to, just to piggyback onto that, when I was reading the documentation, to your point, Mayor, these are the kinds of programs that are available to developers who are trying to clean up blight in a city and, and projects that, that otherwise might not be palatable and cost millions and millions and hundreds and thousands of dollars. So I think that's kind of the impetus behind this.
Yeah, and ideally, and I think you'll see it when, you will see it when you review the material, there is the impetus to redevelop blighted land, but also for the community to negotiate a benefit, such as housing is a big one. And you'll see that throughout as well as jobs. So, you know, it's a balancing act. And absolutely, this process would not apply to any development that we see, and in fact, very few.
Great. Okay, thank you, Counselors Eric. I always forget that we can ask the mayor questions. Anyone else have anything for the mayor? Okay. All right, we can move on into reports. We will start with finance, Counselor Rist. And you're muted.
Thank you, Madam President. This finance committee met, and we've established a few things. We did finish our review of salaries and stipends, and we decided only elected officials will have a salary increase. You will be receiving the ordinances which direct those salary increases in your November 4th packet. At this time, I would like to set a public hearing for the adoption of new salaries that are indicated for the mayor's position, the council, specifically the council president, and the school committee. Again, those ordinance will be available. I'd like to set that public hearing for November 18th in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to set the public hearing for the review of salaries and stipends per charter 2-4A. Any discussion? Barbara.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing for 11/18.
Counselor Kozinski.
If I may, just, I wanted to be clear that the process calls for recommendations for this council to vote on before the end of December for the following election, not for raises for the current council or any other elected official. Just wanted to be really clear about that. That is not allowed.
Thank you. I'm sure there were people out there wondering why we were giving ourselves a raise, and we're not. Thank you. Secondly, we did meet on the EV charges and bike share program, and we did vote 2 to 0 to accept that. I will be setting a public hearing for that for November 18th. I'm going to ask that Val and Jeff and Greg Nowman, please get me the ordinances and the, and the information that I'd like to put in November 4th packet. I need language for those, and I will be writing an email to that effect. Anyway, I would like to set a public hearing for the EV charges and bike share program in the form of a motion for November 18th.
Second.
Motion and a second for the EV charger revolving account setup. Any further conversation? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild. Owen Zera.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing is on November 18th.
Lastly, I have some new business. I will make a first reading for a supplemental appropriation. A supplemental appropriation is requested in the amount of $722,752.98 to be transferred from free cash, $722,752.98, to be transferred to Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund, $722,572.98 for the purpose of move the amount received in cannabis impact fees for FY '20 to the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund. I move that this be sent to the Finance Committee for review. Second.
Motion and a second for supplemental appropriation to move money from free cash to the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund. Any conversation? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
And also, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the Cannabis Stabilization Fund's appropriation, I just read, for November 4th in these chambers, on this Zoom meeting. November 4th, please.
Second.
Motion second to set a public hearing on November 4th for the supplemental appropriation. Any discussion? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild. Yes. Was Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Finally, Madam President, we'll be meeting on Monday, October 19th, because our Wednesdays have been taken up by meetings of the city council. So we're meeting on this Monday, October 19th at 5:00 PM.
No, the 26th.
26.
Why did I say October 19th?
I don't know.
The 26th. Yeah, we're going back in time. The 26th to discuss the new business. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Rist.
What time did you say, Dan?
5:00 PM. I'll give you an agenda.
Okay.
Public safety, Counselor Gomez.
No report at this time, Madam President.
All right. Appointment, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a new business. I just want to make a motion to move Christopher St. Martin for the Appointment Committee. He is going to be the, for the September Culture Council this fraction term, 10/21/2022.
Second. Second.
Motion second to move Christopher St. Martin, his mayoral appointment to the Appointments Committee. Any discussion? Barbara.
Let's see.
Let's pick anybody.
I will. I'm going to start with you, Peg. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
I'm sorry. The meeting, the meeting is going to be November 4th at 5:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing I have to report tonight is our next meeting. We were hoping to hold it next Tuesday, but all Zoom accounts are being used. So we are going to hold it on Monday, November 2nd at 6:30 PM. And that concludes.
All right, thank you. And, okay, you've already set the public hearing for the cannabis highway. Okay. Property, Counselors Eric.
Sorry, I was just typing in the ordinance meeting. There's really nothing to report. I have, still have to connect with the other members of the committee just for a brief meeting to approve minutes. And I did reach out to a member of the Parks Commission and got a similar answer that they have not been convening. I, so I don't know if there's a way to encourage them to do so, but again, I apologize for the length of time this item has been on the agenda, but thus concludes.
Thank you. Rules and government relations, Counselor Pete.
Thank you, Madam President. We haven't met since our last meeting, but we are going to be meeting tomorrow to discuss the parameters around which we will be establishing with the approval of this council, a ordinance review committee. I've done a little bit to promote this, trying to make sure that people know it's happening and attend, because I definitely, the last thing I want is to set this thing up and then have a, you know, a whole, have a bunch of people then become aware of it and either be like, oh, well, I would have loved to join if I knew that was happening, or be like, well, why are you doing it this way? You should have done it a different way. So I'm hoping that, I know it's short notice, but if any, my fellow councillors could call their friends, throw something up on social media, whatever, just to sort of let people know this is happening. It'd be great to see a bunch of people's beautiful faces tomorrow night at 6:00 PM here on Zoom.
Six, Tom?
Yes.
It is six?
Uh-oh.
I was five, but I'm corrected.
Okay. Yeah, no, we had, we had talked about moving this one to six, just to make sure that folks who are getting out of work can. The other thing, we, well, I've got a bit of new business, which I'll introduce in a moment, but the other thing is, we spoke earlier today, and because there's an item of new business that needs to pass that might not, might not get to, we had voted to, or we didn't vote, but we had discussed setting another meeting, so two meetings inside of a week at 5:00 PM on Monday, that would be Monday, the 26th, to discuss the item that I'm about to introduce as new business. Counselor Coniff, dude, yeah.
Yeah, I just realized the finance meeting is also at 5 o'clock, and that is Counselor Rist and myself, who is, who are also. Maybe to six?
Sure. Yeah, we could move it to six. I don't, I'm wide open that night. Does that work for you, Counselor Rist? Or, wait, is there a reason we can't do Tuesday if ordinance is switching to, sorry, to do this in.
Oh, wait. Yeah, can we do Tuesday? Oh, God. We may have to.
I was going to propose during the meeting for finance.
You weren't mute again, Dan. Dan, you're mute. Dan, you're muted. Dan's muted. Dan, muted. Okay. There you go.
Hi, I had a problem. I was thinking I would change the, the meeting. If I look at my calendar, if we meet on the 30th, I'm sorry, wrong month.
We can probably.
On Monday, the 2nd, we could do our finance meeting, as long as I get it done before the 4th. Does that meet with your approval, Madam President?
That'll work.
Okay.
So the finance meeting will be the 2nd, and we can do the rules meeting at 5:00, Tom.
And I see Counselor Kozinski has his hand.
Counselor Kozinski.
Just a quick question, as we change meeting schedules and try to adapt, it's difficult. I get it. But we've announced certain meetings at this meeting, and someone may have come in, stopped, or listened to it, and then go look for that meeting. Is there any concern of anyone else that we be consistent with? If we set it at the meeting here, we stay with that, and we look to have any other meetings be at a different time? Just a suggestion.
Well, I see your point. I do. You know, we have, we have the notification ruling, and I feel like, you know, things do come up and cause us to have to change things. So I don't know. What does the council feel? Like, do we want to stick with the, I mean, it will, it will really cause me to have to miss one or two of these meetings, but that's fine if that's the way we want to go. Counselor Rist?
We have in the past even scheduled meetings without scheduling them on a council meeting. It's not the best, and the situation isn't the best. I hear you, Counselor Kozinski. But I believe the finance meeting, once it's posted, the agenda, the date will be posted. And if somebody gets on Zoom that night and finds out that there's no finance meeting, I apologize for that. But I personally do not want to have four, five meetings in a row the week of the 19th, because I would have that with, I also have a, or the next week. Anyway, I would like to keep the finance meeting on the 2nd, as I stated.
Yeah, I mean, and I hate to do this too, but it just, well, I'll explain the situation, and maybe that'll make it a little bit clearer. I was the one who initially wrote the rule, saying, hey, if we have a bunch of candidates running, maybe we can use ranked choice voting. It was actually Joe McCoy's idea. But with, he was like, hey, wouldn't that be a good case for this? So I wrote up the rule. What I, as a younger, stupider person, did not realize is that when you're filling a, when you're filling a vacancy, that means that there's eight people, which means that there's a possibility of a four-on-four tie. And I tried to write the most simple rule that I could, and it's rules that has no idea what to do if there's a four-on-four tie. Given the fact that it is possible that we did, that that could happen, and given that it would be very confusing and awkward for us to reach that point and realize we don't have a rule for how to handle this, I submitted an emergency amendment that states how to handle it in the case that there is a four-on-four tie. I think it's kind of important that we handle this before. I think it's kind of important that we handle this before this meeting goes because otherwise we're, there is a very small but possible chance. That the election could conclude in a way that our rules don't tell us how to interpret. Which I think would be bad. And so I apologize for not doing my job well enough a year and a half ago that lead. Leading to the situation to begin with, but that said, I really do think we need to meet and discuss this. I don't think we should be doing it. On the meeting on Thursday that we've publicized explicitly for another purpose. That leaves really Monday to do it and there's another meeting on Monday. So, yeah, I mean, it sucks, but I don't, I don't really see the other way out of it.
Counselor Kozinski.
Is it possible to eat, meet later in the evening as opposed to the typical five or six o'clock time? Just.
I cannot meet later than five. I have an East Hampton Media Board of Directors meeting at six. Counselors Eric.
I was just gonna put this out there because having seen the emergency addition to the agenda and Counselor Peak, I'll just say as an aside. You've done significantly more for this council. Well, I don't want to, I'm not casting, you're, you are a humongous asset, so don't sell yourself short. And sometimes we don't always see the future. So anyhow, that being said. Having seen the emergency agenda item, I just assumed that this might have to be voted on tonight. I didn't anticipate. A, an extra meeting and. Given a rule that we, we can approve items if there's unanimous agreement, I reviewed. This item multiple times. I'd feel comfortable voting on it tonight, but I'm just saying that for myself. So. I just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor Rist.
I am not comfortable. I think the language needs some discussion amongst the rules committee members. It's a little confusing, Tom, and I, I'd like to go over it. But that's because I'm, I'm an older guy and I'm easily confused, so that could be it. Anyway, I think we need the meeting. I'd like it to be at five, so Counselor Coniff can attend. On Monday.
Okay. Then we will meet. Set to Zoom.
Yeah. I, I would just. Just to sort of, you know, what, you know, Counselor Kozinski's concern is, I just want to point out that I do think that that concern is relatively valid. And this entire thing stems from. You know. My lack of, of writing this thoroughly enough, so I, I take responsibility for that, just for what it's worth. I think that it's, you know, I, I, I'm sorry that this whole thing is getting muddled as a result of that, so. That's all.
I think it's just a version of twenty twenty, Tom. Barb, I was gonna say Counselor La Bombard. Tom, do you want this to be the only topic on that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And let's see, I don't need to review anything or I don't.
Did you move it already to rules, Tom?
Oh, yeah, I guess I need to mo- vote to move this to rules or make a motion to move this to rules.
Hang on one second, Counselors Eric.
Quick question, just, this is a question of process and just to make sure I'm understanding. The meeting on the twenty-eighth, but if I was understanding correctly, and you can tell me if I'm understanding it wrong. That meeting, because of the nature of, of the meeting, had a very limited scope of agenda, so would we have to add? This agenda item onto the agenda to vote?
Barbara will be getting the, the updated agenda in a first thing in the morning. Counselor Rist and I discussed it today. We will have. Very early on in the meeting, a vote on this topic. Okay, Counselor Pete.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to move the proposed amendment to council rule eight B to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Motion second to move the amendment to council rule eight B to the rules committee. Any conversation? Okay, Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. I want to mention. Senior Tax Work Off Committee is. Moving forward nicely. Counselor Kozinski, keep me honest here. Our next meeting is next Tuesday. For our committee. We are at the point now where we are starting to put together the proposal. That will go to the mayor. The next Thursday at ten AM. I will be making a presentation to the department heads within City Hall to talk to them about this. This new potential. Process that we have. Anyone of the council is welcome to join in that. I will, I will publicize the Zoom. I would like to. Kind of constrain any comments. It'll just be a presentation and feedback from the department heads on. The process, but if you'd like to learn more about it, that would be a good place for you to all. Sit in and, and hear kind of what. The senior tax work off program is all about. Anything to add on that, Counselor Kozinski? Counselor Kozinski is the chair of the senior tax work off.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to say that, that Tuesday meeting is at six PM. Six PM on, on Tuesday. You are correct.
Okay.
And I haven't gotten an agenda on that yet, just as a reminder.
Very important point. Thank you so much.
I've gotten the Zoom information, but nothing else.
Okay. Anything, Tom, from ranked choice voting?
Uh, no, we haven't met since last week.
Okay. And I believe that is everything on our agenda, new business, old business. Counselor Rist?
I just, I, I know everybody wants to go, but I have some really good news. That Val presented at the finance meeting and I forgot to mention it. We have a free cash certification. And she mentioned, we were worried about cherry sheet. But Jen and Val did say that the cherry sheet, which is not, the governor's cherry sheet is not the final one. The legislature will. Bring it forward. And I don't know if they'll reduce it. But according to them, we look like we're in good shape. I know we were all worried that we wouldn't get money from the state like we always do. But Val and Jen are very. Very comfortable now that the budget is as it is. The revenues can match what we need. That's what she said at the. At the finance meeting. I just want to caution everybody, we don't know what the legislature is gonna do with it. But, but it's, it's kind of good news because that means our free cash might be able to be used for. The things that it usually is used for instead of bucking up the budget, but. I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered that and I'm sure the mayor has something to say about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
So I, I would just caution, I've, I've been sketching out my budget timeline and free cash plan presentation for you all, which I, I hope to do by the end of November. With the hope that budget letters will go out to department heads in December. I, I would just make a quick, I don't know if it's metaphor or simile, but. You know, rainy day funds are for rainy days. And we're in a typhoon and we don't know when it's gonna end, so I, I would just say those holding out to buy things we usually do with free cash. I would hold it. A lot longer, so. I am very proud of our financial team, the auditor, the treasurer, the council, the finance. You know, holding the line. All the department heads have done a really great job. And I wish I could say it was enough, but when we don't know what is needed, we don't know if it's enough and we'll, we'll be taking more measures. To, to build those, I guess we should call them monsoon accounts now. So, but thank you and also for always, you guys backing us up and giving direction in the public comment. We're standing together and we're. It's a good day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
Second.
All right, Barbara. You're muted.
Sorry. Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Talk to you.
Twenty, guys. This is a record.
I know. Don't tell him.
It's a Zoom record anyway.
Yeah, Zoom record.
Bye, guys.